Good evening. I will now call to order the City-County Council meeting for Monday, May 21st, 2018. We will begin our meeting with the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. This evening, the prayer will be by my own pastor, Pastor John Ramsey of New Life Worship Center. Could we bow our heads, please? Father, we thank you tonight for this opportunity of city leaders and officials to gather in this place. We thank you that you've given us grace and strength through another day. I pray on today that you would give us wisdom beyond our human intellect, that unity would be found in this room, and that you would guide and direct us in all of your ways. I pray that the end result will be unity in our community. I pray that the end result will be incredible decisions that's made on behalf of the city. I thank you for every official tonight that serves this city and serves it well. I pray your blessing upon their lives, upon their families, upon their children. I pray Deuteronomy 28 over their life, that everything they lay their hand to will be blessed. Be with us tonight, God, and we'll be forever grateful for the end result. In your name we pray. Amen.
Color halt. Work out some left march. Present arms. Please join me in signing the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outward face. Square post. Post. Present. Order. Outward face.
Let all councilors please select your green button to indicate your attendance. There are twenty-two, sorry, there are twenty-four members, councilors present. Counselor Feaster has asked to be excused for the evening. The next item on our agenda is instruction of guests and visitors. Counsel Oliver.
Mr. President, thank you very much for recognition of that fine group of young people that have just preceded this council. I'd like to acknowledge the principal of that wonderful school, Mr. Lloyd Knight, who's the principal of Howe High School.
Seeing no one else. Counselor Cordy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like for all the Howe High School administrators that are here tonight to stand up, be recognized, Jackie Page, Mr. Knight. I'd also like to recognize Nancy Short, the executive director of the Ransburg YMCA. Come on, Nancy, stand up. Give a wave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge Warren Central High School Winter Guard. Are you here tonight? They didn't show. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. All right, if there's no one else. Counselor Gray.
I'd like to introduce Jerry and his wife from the Sovak story review. Jerry.
So that I don't miss anyone else, is there anyone else? All right, very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, May 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob O'Toole, President. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Wednesday, May 2nd, 2018, a copy of a public notice, I mean notice of public hearing on proposal number 154, 2018. Said hearing to be held on Monday, May 14th, 2018, at 5:30 PM in room 260 of the City-County Building. And on proposal number 156, 2018, said hearing to be held on Monday, May 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City-County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have proved with my signature and have delivered this day to the clerk of the City-County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance number four, general ordinance numbers 24 through 36, special ordinance number three, general resolutions numbers nine through 11, special resolution numbers 12 and 13. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is adoption of agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is approval of journals. Do I have consent?
Consent.
We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. The first being proposal number 139, introduced by councilors Cordy, Jackson, Ray, and Johnson, which recognizes the Warren Central High School Winter Guard.
Mr. President, proposal number 139, 2018, recognizes the Warren Central High School Winter Guard for winning first place at the Winter Guard International Japan Regional Championship and serving as United States ambassadors for the Winter Guard International Sport of the Arts. I will be delivering this resolution, if adopted, to those participants off-site as they are unable to attend the council hearing. I respectfully move for its adoption. They're a busy group of girls.
All right, the motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Proposal number, the next item on our agenda is proposal number 168, introduced by councilors Adamson, Gray, and Oliver, recognizing retired Indianapolis Fire Department Lieutenant Charles E. Smith.
The firefighters are still working on getting the family together for a presentation, and I would like to postpone this to the next meeting.
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, proposal, the next item on our agenda is proposal number 214, introduced by councilors Cordy and Johnson, which recognizes the 2017-2018 Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, JROTC, of Thomas Carr Howe Community High School.
Good evening. Even though I live in the Warrior Nation and work for the Warrior Nation, I'll always be a Howe Hornet forever in my heart. So it's a pleasure recognizing them here this evening. And we're going to start with the Junior ROTC. This is a special resolution recognizing the 2017-2018 Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, JROTC, of Thomas Carr Howe Community High School. Whereas Thomas Carr Community High School, founded as Thomas Carr Howe High School, has served as a cornerstone in the east side since opening its doors on September the 6th, 1938, and has been managed by and operated by Charter Schools USA since 2012. And whereas the 2017-2018 Howe Hornets JROTC program led by Senior Army Instructor Lieutenant Colonel Retired Clayton Edens and Master Sergeant Retired John Boone has added to the school's already proud legacy with an extraordinary year. And whereas on April 10th, 2018, the Director of Army Institution for the Indianapolis Public Schools, by order of Cadet Command, did inspect the Hornet Battalion and...
Go ahead, you do the names and I'll finish up.
You want me to do the names?
Yes.
So whereas the Cadet Staff Battalion Commander Cadet Colonel Rhonda Wheeler, Executive Officer Cadet Major Jasmine Reed...
The mic is messing up.
Okay, it's bouncing. Command Sergeant Major Cadet Sergeant Major Michael Lobos, and if I messed up your names, I apologize. Personnel Officer S-1 Cadet Captain Miguel Morito, Security Officers S-2 Cadet Captain Riley Cronley, Training and Operations Officer S-3 Cadet Captain Sierra Imel, Supplies Officer S-4 Cadet Captain Jacob Cooper, and Public Affairs Officer S-5 Cadet Captain Brianna Riley. Brief two praising worthy presentations and... Okay, Blake, get the easy part.
See, I saw those titles and decided I wouldn't read until now. Whereas the color guard and drill teams did perform in exemplary manner and selected cadets' portfolios were inspected and orally defended, receiving meritorious praise. And whereas the Hornet JROTC Battalion did receive a rating of 96 percent, the highest rating in the city for the school year 2017-2018, maintaining honor unit with distinction. Be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council recognizes and congratulates the 2017-2018 Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps of Thomas Carr Howe Community High School on their high ranking of honor unit with distinction. Section 2, the council wishes the corps members continued success in both academics and extracurricular activities as they work toward future goals. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 363-4-14, and I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am, when I got elected, I was really excited to be representing Howe High School and the area around it, and then I realized that Susie Cordy would never actually let me do that. So happy to be batting cleanup here. I just want to thank these wonderful students for all the work they do in the school for making this program a priority, and obviously it was wonderful to have you all post our colors tonight. Susie, you have anything you want to say?
I'd like to have Rhonda Wheeler, what is it again, cadet?
Cadet Colonel.
Cadet Colonel, say a couple words. Come on.
I just want to say that this is a huge honor on behalf of our entire program. The 2017-2018 year has been a lot of hard work, but is very rewarding as we led up to this moment, and it was an honor to post the colors here.
I'm glad you did. Thank you. There. Yeah, we got one more basketball.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 215, introduced by councilors Cordy and Johnson, which recognizes the 2017-2018 Indianapolis Public Schools Middle School Girls Basketball Championship Team from Thomas Carr Howe Community High School.
Love my Hornets. This is a special resolution recognizing the 2017-2018 Indianapolis Public Schools Middle School Girls Basketball Championship Team from Thomas Carr Howe Community High School. Whereas the community known as Irvington on the near east side of Indianapolis was annexed to the city in 1902 with the promise of a high school to serve the area. Thomas Carr Howe High School, named for a former president of Butler University, opened its doors on September the 6th, 1938, on a 10.9 acre tract known as Violet Hill, now 4900 Julian Avenue. And whereas TC Howe has endured quite a bit over the years and experienced several changes. The school was closed in 1995, reopened in 2002 as Thomas Carr Howe Academy renamed Thomas Carr Howe Community High School as a part of Indianapolis Public Schools IPS system, and now has been managed by Charter Schools USA since 2012. Do you want me to do the names?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas TC Howe currently offers classes to all school-aged students who reside in Marion County in grades seven through 12, and their vision is to cultivate the next generation of leaders making a positive change in their community. And whereas on March the 10th, 2018, the Middle School Girls Lady Hornets secured their first ever Middle School Girls Basketball Championship in TC Howe history. Woo, defeating Longfellow. Way to go, girls. Defeating Longfellow Middle School on their home turf to win the 2017-2018 IPS City Championship. And whereas the Lady Hornets received an impressive 13 to 1 regular season win-loss record led by Coach Christina Cunningham. Way to go. Whereas team members Naomi Birch, Andrea Guevara, Tonaya Langston, Jalise Murray, Aleah Owens, Adrian Snedecker, Snedecker, did I say that right? Snedeker fought hard until the final buzzer to come away with a 21-25 championship win. Now therefore...
I would've got that last name right, by the way. Be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council recognizes and congratulates the 2017-2018 Middle School Girls Basketball City Championship Team from Thomas Carr Howe Community High School. Section 2, the council wishes the team continued success in both academics and athletics as they work toward future goals. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 363-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
First, I'd like for the coach to come up and say a couple words, and then we'll hear from Mr. Knight.
I just want to say thank you for this honor. We are very appreciative of this. This being our first city tournament win, and since the Lady Hornets didn't really have a team last year, this is real big for us. So we just, we are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I thought she was one of the players. And now I would like to introduce Mr. Knight, who has done some wonderful things to turn Howe High School around. I went to an event last month to the Howe to Learn and got to meet him, and he's fabulous, and he's really turning things around at my old school. So Mr. Knight?
I'm going to bend down a little bit. I just want to say thank you so much for the resolution. We've had done many great things at our school this year, turned the culture around in our school. Of course, we invite 100% of you to come by anytime you want, see with some of the things we've done. Pretty much the biggest thing that I would just love to talk about is pushing our students to be great every day, and obviously academics and athletics go hand in hand. So thank you so much, and of course, our JROTC is top-notch, and I just want to thank Colonel and Master Sergeant for all they do for our students. Thank you so much this evening.
Congratulations, I'm so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Come on down, David Ray.
The next item on our agenda is proposal 216, introduced by councilors Cordy, Ray, and McQuillan, which honors Douglas Doug Walker, founding member of the Ransburg YMCA.
I'll show you. Oh, yes, all easy words, yeah. If I'm not at my job, you'll find me at the Ransburg YMCA Monday through Friday. Love that place. This is a special resolution honoring Douglas Doug Walker, founding member of the Ransburg YMCA. Whereas Doug Walker was born on October 13th, 1924, in Indianapolis, Indiana, to Pearl and Ralph Walker as the eighth, I'm sorry, as the fifth of eight children. And whereas Doug attended Florence Fay Elementary School Number 21 and graduated from Arsenal Technical High School in 1943, there is where, that is where he met his future wife Joanna Smith. And whereas Doug served in the Army Corps from 1943 to 1947 in World War II. He was stationed in Hawaii with the Radar Division. He loved serving his country, but was anxious to get back to Indianapolis to begin a family and career and to realize the American dream. And?
Whereas Doug and Joanna were married for 70 years before her passing in 2013. And whereas Doug served on the Indianapolis Fire Department for 44 years, serving as a mentor to numerous young firefighters throughout the years. He retired as district chief in 1991. And whereas Doug was appointed to the Marion County Public Library Trustee Board in 1971 by former Mayor Richard Luger, he helped establish the Firefighters Political Action Committee and worked tirelessly for the Firefighters Credit Union for 30 years. And Doug served his community well throughout the years. He was a founding member of the Ransburg YMCA, where he helped establish the Ransburg Youth Football League and coached for several years. Doug believed in the philosophy of the YMCA, healthy body, mind, and spirit. He was an active, he was active in the Warren Central Dads Club and a 50-year member of the Edgewood Masonic Lodge and was a 32-degree mason. And?
And whereas Doug was a wise man with simple needs who understood life's priorities. He consistently put others before himself, and his gratefulness and kindness were demonstrated through the way he cared for and treated others his entire life. He was giving fun and a generous man who had a grateful heart until the end. Doug passed away at the age of 93 on February 6th, 2018. He will be missed by everyone who knew him. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Finish it?
Yes.
Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the life and legacy of Douglas Doug Walker and his many contributions to the city of Indianapolis. Section 2, the council extends its deepest sympathy to the Walker family and wishes them continued strength. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, and he has. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 363414. Special resolution sponsored by Councilors Cordy, Ray, and McQuillan, offered to the City-County Council the 21st day of May, 2018, and Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to also note that when Mr. Walker passed away, he didn't want any flowers. He just wanted money for the kids to go to camp. That's all he wanted, and there were no flowers at that funeral home. Nancy, how many, do you know how much?
Eight thousand dollars.
Over $8,000 was donated so kids could go to camp. That was very important to him. Mr. President, would you mind if Mr. Walker Jr. said a couple words?
Please.
Thanks. All the kids are here.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you sponsoring the resolution. If my father was here, he would be honored, humbled, and a little bit embarrassed because he didn't do the things that he did to get recognition. He was just always trying to make people better and to make our community better. He used to say, clear to his dying day, really, he said, "I lived a wonderful life. I had good parents. I went to good schools." He's a tech grad. I'm a Warren grad, so we'll throw that in there. But anyway, he said, you know, he had good schools, and he got to serve his country, got to marry his high school sweetheart, came back to Indianapolis and got on the Indianapolis Fire Department, which he dearly loved, and he really enjoyed serving this community and trying to make it better, and which he did. Again, thank you very, very much. He did live a good life. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. If you guys want some more, I can get some more, okay?
The next item on our agenda is proposal 217, introduced by councilors Mascari, Gray, Simpson, and Oliver, which honors Byron Fryerson, owner and operator of Byron's No Limit Bail Bonds.
A special resolution honoring Byron Fryerson, owner and operator of Byron's No Limit Bonds. Whereas Byron was born April 16th, 1962, in Indianapolis, Indiana, and was the son of James and Elizabeth Hall. Whereas Byron attended Indianapolis Public School 64 and 39, graduated Emory Manuel High School in 1980. While attending Emory Manuel High School, Byron was exceptional athlete. He excelled both in basketball and football. In March of 1980, he was a football All-Star, All-City Team, and co-captain, and the most valuable player. He is featured in Sports Illustrated. His outstanding performance led him to become an All-Star in basketball and football. His many accomplishments also led him to recruitments by many, many colleges. He chose to further his education with Southern Methodist University in Dallas, Texas, on a football scholarship. And whereas Byron and Janice were joined in holy matrimony in 1983 and married for 35 years before his passing in 2018. Whereas Byron was a hard worker, some of his first jobs included John Sexton Company and Children Gaudens Home, Indianapolis, Indiana. The entrepreneur spirit led him to start his own business, Byron's No Limited Bail Bonds, where he was served in the community over 20 years. Whereas Byron was a wise man with a simple needs who understood life priorities. He consistently put others before himself, and his gratefulness and kindness was demonstrated through the way he cared for and treated others his entire life. He was a given, fun, and generous man who had a big heart until the end. Byron passed away at the age of 55 on March 16th, 2018. He will be missed by everyone who knew him. Now therefore, be it resolved to the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizing the life and legacy of Byron Fryerson and many contributions to Indianapolis. Section 2, the council extends its deepest sympathy to the Fryerson family and wishes them continued strength. Section 3, the mayor has invited to... Section 3, the mayor has invited to join in resolution by affixing his signature here too. Section 4, this resolution shall be in force and effective upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 36-3-4-14. I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
We have some of the family members that like to speak.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Gina Fryerson. I am the sister of Byron Fryerson. On behalf of my sister-in-law, Janice Fryerson, my nephew Ryan, where are you? Wave your hand. My nephew and the rest of our family and close friends, I'd just like to thank the council for even hearing us tonight and for this, on behalf of the Fryerson family, for the opportunity for this proposal. My brother would have been very humbled and honored to even be considered for such an honor. And let's see. He was an amazing son, husband, father, uncle, businessman, and friend. He was willing to help anyone that he came in contact with. He gave wholeheartedly to anyone that was in need and never wanted any type of recognition for anything. I mean, that's just how humble he was. He really didn't even want people to know it was him behind a lot of things that he done. Byron would actually be quite embarrassed right now. Up until his untimely death, he was working with community outreach groups to provide shoes. And just to backtrack a little bit, he wore a size 16. So, he understood. He was working with people in outreach groups for youth that could not afford tennis shoes. He was getting and buying tennis shoes for people with the large feet. He spent many weekends and off-seasons and late nights working on his game at Bethel Park and mentoring any youth that may have asked for any pointers on their game. Affectionately known as, or affectionately known on the south side as Big Byron, he was a major force in and around his surrounding community. We greatly appreciate and are humbled by this honor. We'd just like to thank everybody for listening to us tonight. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 218, introduced by Counselor Feaster, which honors Charles H. Chuck White for his many years of service as the Deputy Controller of the City of Indianapolis, Marion County.
This was initiated by Counselor Feaster, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and present this to Mr. White in her place. A special resolution honoring Charles H. Chuck White for his many years of service as the Deputy Controller for the City of Indianapolis, Marion County. Whereas Mr. White has served Indianapolis and Marion County with integrity and diligence through his leadership in the Office of Finance and Management. Over his accomplished career spanning 40 years, Chuck has brought inestimable wealth to all administrations, controllers, and peers he served. And whereas Mr. White began his career by earning his Bachelor of Science degree in accounting from the University of Illinois in 1975 and soon after became a licensed, certified public accountant. And whereas, under Mr. White's leadership, the city has been awarded the Governmental Finance Officers Association's Annual Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Finance Reporting, wow, that is a really long award, 40 times. The city of Indianapolis has earned more certificates than any other governmental entity in the state of Indiana. And whereas, Mr. White assisted the city in devising financial strategies to create efficiencies, improve delivery of services, and protect taxpayer dollars. And whereas, in addition to managing financial reporting for both the City of Indianapolis and Marion County for the Office of Finance of Management, Mr. White is a devoted husband to Susan, a father to the children Matt and Megan, and a grandfather to Annabelle and Joseph, all of whom he adores. And whereas, Mr. White's many years of experience, his knowledge, and his work ethic ensue that he will be greatly missed by the city and county directors, staff, and all who have worked with him over his long tenure as Deputy Controller. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly honors Charles H. White for his many years of service as Deputy Controller for the City of Indianapolis. Section 2, the council heartily thanks Mr. White for his dedicated service to the City of Indianapolis and Marion County and wishes him an enjoyable retirement. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too, which he has. And section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 36-3414. Special resolution was honored by, was sponsored by all counselors and was passed by the City County Council this 21st day of May 2018. And Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I have known Chuck for 10 minutes now, I'm going to ask your permission to invite him to the microphone to say a few words on his 40 years of service. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. As my good friend Bart Brown will tell you, I'm a man of few words, actually. So, I would just like to express my thanks to you for this honor. And I would also like to thank, sorry, the five mayors and 12 controllers that I've worked for and who have allowed me to serve the citizens of Indianapolis for my life. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Here you go. I've got a couple things for you.
Don't go too far. You don't have a right to call you back.
You're getting a standing ticket. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 219, introduced by Councilors Gray and Osalee, recognizes the Indianapolis Inner City Youth Racing League and the Indianapolis Soapbox Derby Association.
How did I get that? Tonight, we do a special resolution recognizing the Indianapolis Inner City Youth Racing League and the Indianapolis Soapbox Derby Association. Whereas the Indianapolis Inner City Youth Racing League is an organization that members urban children through participation in activities such as soapbox derby, racing, and other science, technology, engineering, mathematics, STEM events, and whereas has been working with the children for over 17 years. And the IICYRL applies basics to skills with the children while they learn how to utilize the principle of conservation of energy, ener dynamics through science and technology. And whereas races experience the value of a community working together through teamwork and leadership while building family bonds. And whereas the Indianapolis Soapbox Derby is international nonprofit organization whose mission is to build knowledge and character and to create meaningful experiences through cooperation and fair and honest competition. And whereas the Soapbox Derby core values are youth education and leadership development, family engagement and enrichment, honesty, integrity, and perseverance, innovation and entrepreneurship, teamwork and cooperation, mentoring, volunteerism, and commitment to community. Whereas the City County Council wishes to acknowledge the effort of this Indianapolis Inner City Youth Racing League and the Indianapolis Soapbox Derby Association for providing opportunities for children that would not normally have the opportunity to race. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the City County Council hereby recognizes the effort of the Indianapolis Inner City Youth Racing League and the Indianapolis Soapbox Derby Association for giving youth the opportunity to succeed on and off the track. The mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature. The resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption and compliance. The special resolution was sponsored by Councilor Gray and Osalee and was passed by the City County Council this 21st day, 21, 2018. I so move, Mr. President.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
At this time, I'd like to bring Larry to the mic and let him tell you even more about the inner-city racing and where we are today and where we would like to be at tomorrow.
Thank you for this tremendous honor. The City of Indianapolis and the Indianapolis Parks Department and the Indianapolis Soapbox Derby have a long history and relationship that has become the envy of the soapbox derby world. It's an international event and how our city and our organizations have worked together to make this an outstanding organization is, it's really, it really is envy. We've got, I was just told this past weekend, we had people that raced all over the country, came here to race, and said they've never seen a facility like this. And it's because of, because of you and the people in the Parks Department that have made this possible and we're extremely grateful. Monroe Gray was also one of the founders of the Indianapolis Inner City Youth Racing League, as well as Bud Myers behind me and many others that made this possible. So, thank you. And while I'm just seeing a finish up.
Hi, I'm Dacina Paul and I may repeat some things that they have said, but working with kids, I've learned repetition tends to help people learn better. So, my name is Dacina Paul. I'm a current board member and I'm the immediate past president of the Indianapolis Soapbox Derby Organization. And we really can't thank you enough for giving us this recognition. For those of you who don't know who we are or what we do, let me give you a little background information. We're a non-for-profit organization that completely runs with volunteers. No one gets paid a dime for anything that we do. We're part of the International Soapbox Derby Organization, which is based in Akron, Ohio. It's now in its 82nd year. We're the only other city that has consistently held a race since the initiation of Soapbox Derby. We organize gravity racing competitions for kids from ages 8 to 21 years of age. These children work as a team with adults to build, maintain, and race cars downhill. Through this sport, we're able to teach kids about the proper use of tools, science, technology, engineering, and math. We also value teaching racers about good sportsmanship, respect for others, and the importance of setting and accomplishing goals. A large part of our organization is working with those inner-city youth of Indianapolis who may not have the opportunity to be involved in other sports. These children become part of our family. We want them to learn that they can become champions in every aspect of their lives. Larry Tenas, who is our director of our inner-city kids, he's the heart of our association and driving force in helping grow and reach more children. This man alone has become a father figure to more than 40 children in just the past few months. He's been going into the Indianapolis Public Schools and recruiting any child that wants to come race with us, no matter what their financial situation is. He's helped them learn how to use the tools and mental skills to build their car, race, and often win. These children will be racing in a Mayor's Cup Race on June 9th at Wilbur Shaw Memorial Hill. It's located at 30th and Cold Spring Road. Racing will start at 19:00 a.m. and last most of the day. We'd love to have as many people in the community come to help support these kids and let them know that we care and they have a community that supports them. The Mayor's Cup Race is a fun, longstanding tradition for our organization. All of this would not be possible without the incredible support of Mayor Hogset, City Council, City County Councilors Bob Osalee and Monroe Gray, who is one of our founding members of the Mayor's Cup Race. The Indianapolis City Council as a whole, Leann White and Linda Broadfoot from Indy Parks Department, Bud Myers from the Housing Administration, which helps us feed these kids every time they're hanging out with us all day. All of our donors and of course our tireless volunteers. Again, we can't thank you enough for the chance to let others know about our passion for helping kids and be successful, happy, healthy adults. So, thank you so much.
Just before the lead, we'd like to make one kind of outreach to each and every one of you. On June 9th, we have the Mayor's Race and we would love to have you to come and race. We have had the mayor at every one of these races ever since it started and we only had one disappointing mayor who probably didn't quite get to the finish line ahead of his opponent, but he has promised that he will be back this year for a rematch. So, if you would like to come and you would like to race against the mayor, we would love to have you to race against the mayor. For all of this, we say thank you and we're looking forward to having another great racing year.
We do have a very special accomplishment with the Indianapolis Inner City Youth Racing League.
Okay, so I did totally forget, but we do have a very special thing. Through our inner-city youth racing league, we were able to help Merlin Wells here become our first African-American world champion last year at the Akron All-American Race. And he will be in the 500 Festival Parade on Saturday. Thank you so much.
The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 148, refer to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Proposal 148, 2018, appointed Blair Inglehart to the Telecom and Video Services Agency Board. Mr. Inglehart has withdrew his name for consideration and the committee recommends that proposal be stricken by a vote of 8 to 0. And I so move, Mr. President.
Motion's properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll come, I will proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 167, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 167, appoint Amanda Gillett to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Decatur Township Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Gillett appeared before the committee on Monday, May 14, 2018, to seek appointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0. And Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is Introduction to Proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Numbers 191 through 193 are referred to the Administration and Finance Committee. Proposal 191, introduced by Counselor Simpson, appoints Lakeisha Jackson to the City County Audit Committee. Proposal 192, introduced by Counselor Osalee, reappoints John Gerton Jr. to the Telecom and Video Services Agency Board. Proposal Number 193, introduced by Counselor Simpson, approves a transfer of $100,000 in the 2018 budget of the Information Services Agency, Information Services Fund, to purchase docking stations, monitors, and audiovisual equipment. Proposal Number 194, introduced by Counselor Jackson, refer to the Community Affairs Committee, establishes a study commission on gaps and disparities in providing social services in Marion County to review. in Marion County to review and analyze information gathered from service providers, provider experts, and to recommend operational policy changes and potential long-term funding options for addressing the city's social services needs. Proposal Number 195, introduced by Counselor Johnson, refer to the Education Committee, approves an additional appropriation of $560,000 in the 2018 budget of the Department of Metropolitan Development, Redevelopment General Fund, to finance a program that enhances post-secondary educational opportunities and access to youths and adults in Marion County. Proposal Numbers 196 through 199 are referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal Number 196, introduced by Counselor Lewis, approves an additional appropriation of $850,000 in the 2018 budget of the Metropolitan Development, Redevelopment General and Consolidated County General Funds for environmental remediation of two brownfield sites and to meet contractual needs for permanent supportive housing. Proposal Number 197, introduced by Counselor Osley, amends the code to properly reflect the Indianapolis Housing Agency's conversion of its properties to rental assistance demonstration, which allows public housing agencies and owners of other housing and urban development, HUD-assisted properties to convert units from their original sources of HUD financing to project-based Section 8 contracts. Proposal 198, introduced by Counselor Miller, amends the code to establish the Miles Square Economic Improvement District to provide a funding mechanism for various projects and services within the Miles Square area. Proposal Number 199, introduced by Councilors Miller, Adamson, and Mascary, amends the code to establish the Greater Virginia Area Corridor Economic Improvement District for the development and improvement of Fletcher Place and Fountain Square Business Area. Proposal Numbers 200 through 208 are referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee and were introduced by Counselor Robinson. Proposal Number 200, appoints Tracy McQueen to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal Number 201, introduce, appoint Andrew Campbell to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Proposal Number 202, reappoints Louis Protheta to the Indianapolis Marion County Forensic Services Board. Proposal Number 203, approves additional appropriations and transfers totaling $451,036 in the 2018 budget of the Marion County Prosecutor, Prosecutor Equitable Sharing State Grants and Drug-Free Community Funds to purchase vehicles and equipment and implement the felony diversion program. Proposal Number 204, approves an additional appropriation and transfer totaling $115,000 in the 2018 budget of the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, IMPD, general and city cumulative capital funds to purchase equipment for the Traffic Division, cover costs associated with the Leadership Academy, and support a furniture upgrade at the Training Academy. Proposal Number 205, approves transfers totaling $150,000 in the 2018 budget of the Indianapolis Fire Department, Fire Cumulative and Fire General Funds for station maintenance and repairs and contract, contract materials, including costs for supplies per city plumbing, electrical, and mechanical contracts. Proposal Number 206, approves a transfer of $82,000 in the 2018 budget of the Forensic Services Agency, General County General Fund, to purchase forensic instrumentation and equipment for the drug, chemistry, and crime scene sections. Proposal Number 207, approves an additional appropriation of $4,200,000 in the 2018 budget of the Office of Public Health and Safety Consolidated County General Fund for land acquisition and lease expenses related to the Community Justice Facility Complex. Proposal Number 208, amends the code to create city and county community justice campus funds as sub-funds of the County General Fund to be used solely for expenses related to community, to the Community Justice Campus. Proposals Number 209 through 211 refer to the Public Works Committee and were introduced by Counselor Adamson. Proposal Number 209 approves an additional appropriation of $1,920,000 in the 2018 budget of the Department of Public Works Solid Waste Collection General Fund to purchase new heavy side loader trucks for refuse collection. Proposal Number 210 approves an additional appropriation of $9,100,000 in the 2018 budget of the Department of Public Works Transportation General Fund to purchase capital equipment to, and to hire additional staff to perform street maintenance work. Proposal Number 211 approves an interlocal agreement between the, between the city, the Department of Public Works, and the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, Indigo, for the financing, design, construction, implementation, and maintenance of rapid bus transit lines and furtherance of the implementation of the Marion County Transit Plan. Proposal Numbers 112 and 113 refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee. Proposal Number 112, introduced by Councilors Lewis, McQuillan, Osley, Adamson, Evans, Gray, Jackson, Johnson, Simpson, Fanning, Kreider, Westler, and Corte, adopts the Declaration of the Director of the Marion County Public Health Department and approves the Safe Syringe Access and Support Program. Proposal Number 113, introduced by Counselor Westler, rescinds the additional local income tax rate for a public transportation project. Proposal Number 220, introduced by Counselors Simpson, Kreider, and Coats, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, approves an additional appropriation of $220,000 in the 2018 budget of the Office of Audit and Performance Consolidated County Fund to cover the cost of the Marion County Sheriff's Office Comprehensive Assessment of Proficiency of Execution of the Marion County Sheriff's Office Statutory and Constitutional Authorities and Responsibility. Proposal Number 225, introduced by Counselor Osley, refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, amends the code regarding the appointment of the Indianapolis Police, Police Department Mayor Board Members, adding two additional members, one to be appointed by the council and one by a majority vote of the active members of IMPD, in staggering term ending dates. Proposal Number 226, introduced by Counselor Osley, refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, amends the code to add a requirement that bidders on public works projects certify that they have complied with city XVE policies on prior projects. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 190, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 190 authorizes the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds in aggregate, aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,950,000 for the acquisition construction equipment of a three-story, 78,000-square-foot building above a two-story parking garage with a building consisting of 7,300 square feet of office space, 5,000 square feet of retail space, and associated walkways, sidewalks, and infrastructures for pedestrian and vehicle access located at 8711 North River Crossing Boulevard, Duke Headquarters Project in District 3, which is Counselor Scales and approves and authorizes other actions in respect thereto. Representatives from Duke Realty appeared before the committee and made a presentation regarding Duke Realty, which was founded and has been headquartered in Indianapolis since 1972. They currently have 16 offices in 13 states and the new headquarters will create a total economic impact of 1.3 billion over 10 years, employing up to 227 employed, employing up to 227 full-time employees with an annual payroll of 35.4 million annually. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to Proposal Number 190? All right, seeing none. Additional comments from councilors? Then we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Adamson. The motion carries by a vote of 23 to one. Proposal Number 221, Proposal Number 221 is a rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on May 11, 2018. And Proposals Number 222 and through 224 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission, May 10. If no counselor wishes to call down their proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. And the next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 156, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 156, 2018, approves a transfer of additional appropriations of $180,000 each in the 2018 budget of the Marion County Sheriff's Department, County General, and Community Capital Improvements Funds to purchase two body scanners. Colonel Louis Deslin, Marion County Sheriff's Department, said that the proposal is reaction to the opioid crisis that has happened across the country and being smuggled into the jail by internalizing the drug. These scanners will detect drugs that are being brought in internally and will help identify those that are trying to bring drugs into the facility. Said that they will have two scanners and one will be located at the Marion County Jail, one will be at the intake prior to that person going to the jail. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send Proposal 156 to the full council. They do pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of 7 to 1 with Counselor Westler casting a negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from councilors? Counselor Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some questions if some of the directors of the agencies that are seeking the funds might come forward.
Colonel, if you could, Colonel, would you state your name and your position?
Yeah, my name's Louis Deslin. I'm a Colonel with the Marion County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Colonel Deslin. I, I voted for this and I'm in full support of it, but I'm just a little bit concerned about the numbers that you presented to the committee and that's in the proposal of 180,000 each. And I found some online costs and one in particular seemed to be very professionally put research paper that showed the type of scanners we're seeking, more in the $225,000 cost with many other incidental costs that are needed to be factored into a budget for the scanners. For instance, the software to run the computers, the monitors to view the images. Let's see. Let's see. Having enough power and electricity available at each installation to handle what's needed for each scanner. So, they came up with about $15,000 over the actual cost of the unit. So, I'm wondering, I know that prices do vary regionally and depending on what kind of a contract cost you can get, but I just want to make sure you're going to be seeking adequate funding for these units.
We are very comfortable with the amount we're seeking. Many of the things you mentioned are already in place, such as sufficient power, the computers and the software that, that would be necessary in order to operate these machines. The, we are coincidental with Marion County Community Corrections seeking these machines and we have had not firm quotes, but quotes in the 180,000 or less range. The prices that you saw online were, I think, are like the suggested retail price, but we're confident our, that what the quotes we will get will be well below that and even, we hope below the $180,000 amount that we're asking for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience or is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to Proposal Number 156? Counselor Westler.
Yes, I would like to talk to Mr. Colonel Deslin again, please. I still have some concerns. And I would appreciate, really thank you and Ms. Lawrence for sending me over some brochures on the, the machines that you have got down, but I still have some, a couple concerns. One, it doesn't say, I haven't had time, I just got them today or this evening, but I wanted to know if there's any, and I've contacted some people from the state Health Department on these machines, the operators, are they supposed to be certified or not certified? And the training that will be approved by the state of Indiana for taking x-rays. They say it gets an x-ray machine.
The, the level of radiation that's, that's put forth by these machines is so low that we're, we will not have to have people certified as radiation operators. The amount of radiation is pretty much equivalent to what you experience at the airport when you go through the devices there. The, the, the range, in fact, with Counselor Scales, that information she had, it said that you could safely be, go through the machine 1,000 times in a year without any harm to the individual. We were, we were looking at the 100 to 1,000 repetition range and we did look at the recidivism rate with the inmates that we have in our jails. Six people were in the jail 16 to 20 times in, last year and they were an anomaly. Most people only come through one time in a year. The, and the, once an inmate, an inmate would only experience these machines once. That's actually when they're coming through processing to go into the jail or coming back, coming from another facility to our jail. Those individuals who leave the jail to go to court on a daily basis would be in our secured area, they would not have to go through these machines. So, the, the experience that the inmates would have with these machines would be very low and we also, there, there were challenges around the country and those have been resolved. We talked, there are 321 such machines in 43 different states. There have been no issues with individuals becoming sick because of it or endangered by the level of radiation that's shown. There are also a lot of repeat customers with these machines, so the different correctional facilities that use these around the country are very satisfied with the operation of the machines.
Colonel Deslin, how often do they have to be recalculated, calibrated?
They would be recalibrated every other year.
So, I wonder if the machine gets bumped or runs, a big fight maybe happened, the guy doesn't want to do it and there's a fight and the machine gets bumped around. Is it suggested that they should be rechecked and calibrated again?
Well, I'm, I'm not familiar with exactly how Well, I'm, I'm not familiar with exactly how that works, but if there was, if the, if the machine is moved or in any way damaged, we would certainly have it recalibrated. But if it stays in place, the, the norm for these machines is every other year they come in for recalibration. And again, there have not been issues around the country with those kinds of concerns.
Okay, is there any kind of warning system under the machine is not working properly or anything like that?
I, I can't speak to that. I don't know, sir, but I assume that there is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Are there any additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number one-five-six? Seeing no one, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to one. Will now proceed to Special Orders Unfinished Business. We have no business under Special Orders Unfinished Business. We will now proceed to Special Orders Final Adoption. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one-five-one, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Administration and Finance Committee, her proposal number one-five-one, 2018, on Tuesday, May the fifteenth, 2018, which determined the need to lease 67,177 square feet of space at 151 North Delaware Street for the use by the Marion County Public Defender Agency. Robert Hill, Chief Public Defender, appeared before the committee and said that this lease will give the Public Defender Office space to expand and the flexibility to move out if they choose to, to a new criminal justice center. Mr. Hill said that they have received a rent abatement of 277,000 with a lower square footage payment. He said also, he also said that because they received the reimbursement from the Public Defender Commission, they will not have to spend more money to move or will, will save over $20,000 over the course of the lease. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries by a vote of twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one-five-two, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one-fifty-two approves the statement of benefits for Markey's Audiovisual Inc. to allow tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Mark Miller, Markey's, Markey's Retail and Staging President gave a brief presentation.
Sorry to interrupt real quick. On Thursday, there's a citizens meeting.
Sir, sir, sir.
What time is that?
Sir.
Do you know what time that is?
Sir.
Oh, I'm, I'm just gonna leave as soon as I get there.
We can take, tell you outside.
Please proceed, Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, sir. The, sorry, Mark Miller, Markey's Rental and Staging President gave a brief presentation. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Any comments from councilors? Counselor Clay.
Thank you, Mr. President. With respect to the proposal one-fifty-two, the period of time for the abatement, do we know what that is?
Mr. President, Mr. Hunt is here.
Mr. Hunt, if you would just introduce yourself and your position.
Thank you, Ryan Hunt. I'm the program, Principal Program Manager for Economic Incentives at DMD, City of Indianapolis. Response to the question regarding length of abatement is a seven-year real property tax abatement proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to one. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one-five-three, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number one-fifty-three and one-fifty-four Proposal number one-fifty-three amends a declaratory resolution for the 96th Street Castleton Economic Development Area and allocations area by removing certain real estate from allocate, the allocation area. Proposal number one-fifty-four amends a declaratory resolution for 96th Street Castleton Economic Development Area and plan to create a new allocation area within the economic development area. Shannon Norman, Department of Metropolitan Development, DMD Principal Planner, Code Revision Section, gave a brief presentation, and Mr. Ryan Hunt, Department of Metropolitan Development, DMD, gave a brief overview of the plan to create a new allocation area. Mr. Bart Brown, Council CFO, stated that this is currently, that this currently sits in the 96th Street TIF, and the city decided to do a single-site TIF for these develop, developer-backed bonds. They would like, they would like for the council to carve out these particular parcels out of the 96th Street TIF and create its own TIF, which the proposal number one-fifty-three and one-fifty-four are designated to do so. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Clay.
The designation, they will create their own TIF is my understanding. The designation of an economic revitalization area, is that also included in the TIF or is this inner outside the TIF? The designation.
Counselor Lewis, we. Mr. Hunt, could you come forward again, please?
Thank you, President Osley, and the members of the council. A revitalization area or an economic development area is a prerequisite to the creation of a TIF allocation area. So that did exist as the 96th Street Castleton Economic Development Area, and that remains. These two resolutions, as was explained, carve out the allocation area portion, but the redevelopment area is still, still in place.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Are there any other questions from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll come to the board for the vote. The motion carries by a vote of twenty-three to one. Proposal number, the next item on our agenda is proposal number one-five-five, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one-fifty-five amends portion of the code to clarify and correct errors in the language of the Consolidated Zoning and Subdivision Control Ordinance. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll come to, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries by a vote of twenty-four to zero. We will now proceed to Special Orders Final Adoption. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one-five-seven, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal one-fifty-seven, 2018, approves a transfer of appropriations totaling 437 and 500,000 dollars in the 2018 budget of the Marion County Community Corrections Agency to purchase supplies and equipment for the DeValle Residential Work Release Facility. Scott Hohl, the CFO of Community Corrections, stated that the single biggest purchase would be for a body scanner at the DeValle Residential Facility. Said that they have budgeted 200 grand, 200,000 dollars to cover the purchase of the maintenance. The next largest purchase will be to replace mattresses approximately 400, have not been replaced since 2007. Mr. Hohl also said that there will be also duck and dust cleaning throughout the facility, which will have not been done since 2007, and some other expenses and repairs and improvements for the bath facility and kitchen. Mr. Hohl also said that they use funds for training, educational, and basic supplies. Counsel Oliver moved, seconded by Counselor Scales, to send proposal one-fifty-seven to the full council. They do pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of seven to one, with Counselor Westler casting a negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries by a vote of twenty-four to zero. Proposal number one-five-eight, refer to Public Works Committee, Chairman Robinson. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one-fifty-eight approves an interlocal agreement between the City of Indianapolis and the City of Greenwood for the financing, design, construction, and improvement of the intersection of County Line Road and Madison Avenues in District Twenty-Three. Melody Park, Chief Engineer of Department of Public Works, stated that DPW is requesting approval of the purchase of the right-of-way for the intersection improvement. She also stated that the right-of-way in Council District Twenty-Three is approximately .147 acres at intersection of County Line Road and Madison Avenue. Ms. Park stated that the median crosswalk and turning radius will be enhanced in this improvement. The chair asked what the total cost of the project is. Ms. Park stated that the total cost is 732,000 dollars and will be federally funded, and the bidding will start in July of 2019. Counsel Kreider moved, seconded by Counsel Oliver's, Oliver, to send proposal one-fifty-eight to the full council. They do pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of eight to zero, and I so move. Second.
This motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries by a vote of twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one-six-zero, refer to Public Works Committee, Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals one-sixty to one-sixty-six. Thank you. Proposal number one-sixty authorizes intersection controls at Chester Hill Way and Lane and Street Clifford Court and Drive and Southby Drive in District Eighteen. Proposal number one-sixty-one authorizes intersection controls at Burlington Avenue and Douglas Road in District Two. Proposal number one-sixty-two authorizes speed limit reduction up to 25 miles per hour in the Danbury Neighborhood in District Two. Proposal number one-sixty-three authorizes intersection controls at Dearborn Street and 28th Street in District Seventeen. Proposal number one-sixty-four authorizes intersection controls on Arapaho Drive at Blackfoot Drive and Lone Wolf Drive East and West in District Fourteen. Proposal number one-fifty, one-sixty-five authorizes parking restrictions on the Island Subdivision in District Six. And proposal number one-sixty-six authorizes intersection controls at Woodland Avenue and Fairfield Avenue in District Nine. Counsel Henry, McHenry moved and seconded by Counselor Kreider to send proposals one-sixty to one-sixty-six to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of eight to zero, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? We'll proceed then to the board for our vote. Motion carries, the vote of twenty-four to zero. Next item on the agenda is Special Service District Councils. There is no business under Special Service District Councils. There is no new business under new business. And the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournments. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an announcement to make also, and councilors, you have a copy of this at your desk that I just passed out during the introductions. We are asking that neighborhoods and neighbors and residents come out to support neighborhoods, cultural assets, and small businesses affected by NDOT's plan to divide communities with lane expansions and concrete walls. On Wednesday, May 23rd, at the Biltwell Event Center, located at 960 South White River Parkway West Drive, on Wednesday at 6:00, citizen leaders demanding that neighborhoods' safety and quality of life be top priorities in rebuilding the North Split will stage a rally. It will be supported with social media and live media on site. If you wish to speak at this event, please contact Trish Whitcomb at 317-818-1728. And we are inviting the public to come out and attend this protest if you are opposed to the NDOT proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The documented agenda for the meeting of the council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By all councilors in memory of Chief Gary Coons. By Counselors Simpson and Gray in memory of Ernest Lee Staton, Senior. By Counselors McQuillan, Kreider, Holliday, Corte, Maury, Coats, Wester, Fanning, and McHenry in memory of Shasta Williams Jacobs. By Counselors Lewis and Robinson in memory of Gary Daniel Crowe. By Counselor Adamson in memory of Harold R. Gillespie. By Counselor Coats and McQuillan in memory of Lawrence firefighter Jeff Holt and Frank Ricketts. By Counselor Coats in memory of Pete Weingard. By Counselor Feaster in memory of James Bill and Charles Smith. By Counselor Wester in memory of William Bronner. By Counselors McHenry and McQuillan in memory of Larry Carter. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow councilors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body in a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we adjourn.